And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. First thing is the agenda approved. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Second by Kevin. Second by Gary. Discussion. It's all on table.
Aye.
Opposed. This time we have time for public comment. Consent items. Do you have a motion to approve the consent items? So move.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Discussion.
Can, just for the notes, can we have it say musical orchestra director, if that's possible? I, when I opened up the agenda, I thought, oh, we're getting an orchestra. I was so excited. Then I saw it was for the musical. I just don't want to mislead anybody.
Oh, and this might be a good time to explain, when the request for the musical came through, there were no stipulations for needing a musical orchestra director because they were going to use taped music. But that's, in attempting to do that, it was not working at all. And so Greta did come to Todd and say, we need to have an actual live orchestra that can listen to the kids and go with them.
Listen, I heard it was more of a digital remake of everything.
See, that's-
I don't know if we've got- Either way, I think he has his work cut out for him.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it would just name musical in there, that would be-
You could put an L on the end of it. Orchestral.
Orchestral. I would love an orchestra, by the way.
Yeah, any other? Yeah, Mr. Chair, and the football coach, is that, is the search that go to within first and then-
Yes.
And then?
It's an internal posting first, and then, then the post goes externally.
Any other comments? All in favor with changes on the musical?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Discussion item, MNBA alignment, ready?
We just talked about this again in the online school meeting. As we were going through things, as Angela Speckert has been really working on the processes and procedures, we have found that when we signed that contract going to a managed program, there was probably a reason that they suggested that this be our organizational model. And we didn't go with that model at the time that that contract was signed. And now, as we're trying to get through the procedures and to make sure that everything is handled efficiently, effectively, and consistently, it just has become increasingly obvious to those of us involved that, that one thing on the organizational chart where it says lead principal, that should just say a K through 12 online principal. So not a K-12, but a K hyphen 12 online principal. This would solve some of the communication issues that are occurring and would, and would really lend itself to more efficiencies. Do any of the committee members want to speak to this?
The one open, open item is that the assistant principal was the testing coordinator as well. So the testing coordinator position has been pulled out and put under the principal. And so that's something that still needs to be worked out. Who is going to do that work when their work needs to get done?
Anybody have any questions on it? Kevin, did you want to?
No, I'm, I'm supportive of it.
Michaeline, you good? You have any questions?
I'm not sure what my questions are yet, because I'm not-
And it's just coming to you today. We're not voting on it. We're voting on it two weeks. So I-
So if you have any questions-
Yeah, I'll give a poll of the committee.
Yeah. Okay. Long-term facility, maybe some state?
What you have in your packet is the notification that they'll start pouring concrete tomorrow, well, because of the rain. This now got moved to Thursday. I'm hoping it will actually happen on Thursday. But to pour concrete, weather has to permit it unless, of course, you're working on the new I-90 bridge. And then the other thing that it's on there is the permits. So the permit number that I told you in the update the week before last was way too much. As that check came to City Hall, they said, oh, and by the way, you overpaid on the last permit as well. So-
So you need refund?
Basically, yes. And so we're not sure that's being recomputed. And the city said, oh, here, we forgot to give you what our schedule is because they gave them all the building codes and the fact that we follow Minnesota building codes. But they didn't say that we didn't follow the Minnesota building code speed schedule for permits, which-
So it's getting corrected?
It's getting corrected. And actually, that would be money to the good. So that's, 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 that's a benefit to us. And then the other thing is that you got the abatement contract tonight. There might be, there are some alternates to that bid already in case we need to do abatement around the downrods in the elementary classrooms. Because we can't use the existing downrods, but we're hoping that we can use the existing holes in which the downrods are now currently located.
What are downrods?
The lights hang from the ceiling, and so those rods that hang down are-
Downrods.
Downrods. I'm learning so-
As opposed to uprods or sideways rods?
I'm learning that, that, that would be a curtain rod. Yeah.
I had waxy education about rods.
This is, once again, I'm, I'm, I'm learning a great deal in this process.
Good.
I have one, so with the, the paying the checks thing there. So we're money to the good, but it caused a delay. So the delay is not good.
Well, and actually, the way it worked out, the delay was for pouring the concrete, and weather has forced us to delay that anyway. So-
But so weather and workers permitting, so we have a potential problem with people being able to pour the concrete? So we got weather and workers-
The people are waiting, they're now going to come on Thursday, weather permitting. Right, right now, we're at the mercy of the weather. However, we're pouring this, it's the pad for the chiller. And so this is well in advance of the chiller actually being set on the pad. So it's not any, the delay is not going to impact other parts of the project. If the delay, if, if the delay was going to start impacting other things, I wouldn't be this calm.
So I just, you said, it sounded like we were competing with I-90, with the bridge-
Oh, no, 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 I, I-
So I'm trying to make, I'm trying to figure out-
No, I, I make those comments because my future brother-in-law has to go out at 2:00 in the morning, rain, shine, snow, sleet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on the facility updates, we, are we going to discuss, I don't see it necessarily, on what's happened at the school? How's that set up for the grade school?
That, I am hoping that will be finalized at the end of this week. And then at the, the May 3 meeting, you will, it will be here. But it also will be publicized before that for the, for the parents, so they know exactly where their kids are going. So we've got to get lunch involved in that. We have to know which support personnel are going to be where and when. So all of that is specified.
And then where are we going to, Rick was setting up a time to have a meet and greet with any parents or anybody that has questions, correct?
We've got that, that announcement is going in the banner. That's going to be May 3 at 7:00. So it will be in here right after the board meeting. Hopefully, the board meeting will get done by 7:00. Kind of throwing down the gauntlet for you people. But then, so, May 3 at 7:00, and UNESCO's putting together pictures from the renderings. So they, everybody here will see what the front of this building will look like. They'll see what the hallways will look like at the elementary, what the chiller will look like on the outside of the building. Kind of the, what the soffits will look like for the rooms in the elementary school that gets a soffit. What some of the new lights will look like, especially the lights when you're walking into the gym at the elementary school, because we're putting in historically accurate lighting. So the LED lights will look like the actual original lights that were in that hallway. I can't wait.
And then they could also discuss the parent, the kids, what's going to happen at that time?
Yep.
So Rick will be here to do kind of a presentation on the whole. Now, are we going to also have the system on, so if somebody's not able to make it here?
If they're not able to make it here, they can at least listen. We don't have that, yeah, we don't have the capability of showing that camera, the-
They can hear the conversation.
They can hear the conversation. And then with the archive, we can put the PowerPoint right there.
So that's going to be part of the information that's sent out. If you cannot come to the school on that evening, go online to the site or whatever, and be able to listen in.
Right.
I just want to make sure that everybody has as much opportunity to hear what's going on or have, and if they have questions before, who should they get a hold of? Is it Rick's? It's kind of the point of contact?
Well, it's, it's for both buildings, so that makes me the point of contact, because it's-
And then you're going to disperse it to those two to make sure that they get back to whoever has concerns or concerns. I just want to make sure it is-
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Tom, to invite questions ahead of time. Because there is a chance then to answer. If one person comes up with a question, 10 other people may have that question. They didn't know they had it until-
Correct. And at the same time, you know, and then that can be addressed at the meeting.
Right, and then it's-
And some people pre-question this, and this is the answer, or what we're going to do to resolve that problem, so. As long as they're ready. Rick, and so then Todd will be here also that evening to go over his stuff, correct? Okay. So they'll be the main focus. Anybody have any other questions on that? Are you good? Okay, old business. Items for discussion and approval, superintendent's contract. We talked about it last week. I know we, everybody got a copy of it. There was a little bit of discussion when we were in our meeting prior to this meeting, that maybe some of the numbers may be off. I think the end number was the same. We're going to have to have Marsha probably re-review that. Or, I don't know if anybody has any questions on it?
It's just the percent package increase each year on average needs to change. That was computed incorrectly.
Right.
So I'd like to have accurate numbers before we approve it.
The, the numbers in the contract are accurate.
Numbers in the contract are accurate as far as on here, the overall average of the package each year. And again, we just, I have to throw you out there, Mimi, Mimi kind of did a quick calculations on hers, and it ended up being, I think, 8.2, correct, for each year?
No, well, that's the average.
Average for each year. It broke it down on the contract differently by each year because, you know, the beginning bump was bigger than the middle one was less. You know, it kind of went up, and they adjusted the numbers as far as, like you talked about last time. The insurance part of it?
So a bigger increase in year one and less of an increase in year two?
Year two and three, correct. Yeah, year one, the reason it's like that is because, again, the insurance went from a single rate below the teachers to what the teachers are getting. And then the 403B went up to what everybody else, you know, to what-
Just six percent.
Six percent.
Okay.
So that's really the two major parts, and then we had a bump in salary. Again, she's still at below what Jean made when she, after three years, what Jean started off at, if I'm not mistaken. Somewhere in that category.
And the, the contract overall package is still significantly less than what-
So as a, as a negotiation team, we felt it was, you know, and again, if you guys have bad questions, I'm assuming you would have asked, I think, some, hopefully, everybody got a chance to look at it. Did anybody have any questions before we approve it?
Just on the, the, you know, we used to be two-year cycle and three-year cycle. Has there been, was there discussion to just stay with a three-year, to do a three-year? Because you move to a three-year contract. So are we going to, because the rest of them are two years, right? Everything else is two years. So I'm just, so that, you know, it kind of is a hiccup in, in renegotiating things. Not really, but it's just different.
Well, we felt this, yeah, three-year would be a better option-
Okay.
-in this situation, just because with the superintendent, if it falls in between, you know, so, and I don't know if it will even fall.
No, well, it will sometimes, and sometimes not. It'll, it'll fall in some contracts.
I know, and we started off, I think, part of the discussion was, should we look for two or three years? And we thought three years would be the best option.
Are we up against a deadline to vote on this tonight? I mean, are we causing damage to anybody, anything, by pushing it off to the next meeting? I'm not saying that to make it-
It would go into, if you wanted to approve it, it goes into effect July 1 of this year.
Because I, the spreadsheet that has, you know, the actual numbers and kind of maybe what we're used to seeing, it, I think, would be beneficial for people to look at.
I think everybody got a copy of it, right?
No, the spreadsheet, you didn't, you didn't want me sending that out.
Oh, we just sent out the overall package part of it, okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's, because it doesn't go into effect until July 1.
Except if you're not going to approve one, I, I'd need to know that, too, because I know that, I don't mean to go look for another job.
I don't mean to suggest it.
But your concern is to make sure that everybody has the right numbers?
It's a pretty big deal. I mean, it's probably the biggest decision we as a board make. And considering that the number was wrong and the percentage, and I, I don't do this for a living, you know? I could have a wrong, I could have a wrong number here, and I think people should see the total package. Because I, the, the total package does increase significantly over three years. I mean, it, it kind of sounds like that, it's just, oh, it's a 5%, but it goes up drastically. So I want you guys to be aware with the-
I think most of the people, I know I've talked to a few of them, as far as what each year went up. You know, how it went up, we've talked about it. And I know we had Mar, the number came from Marsha. So I think that, you know, we could haul off and see, you know, what it's, in case she meant to miss something. But-
And I can give you historical packages from superintendents in the past.
I understand. I mean, you're, yeah, superintendents are to be cheap, right? I mean, it's a, it's, it's an important decision for us, and it's a lot of money, too. So I just want to make sure people are aware. But do you want to vote it through? That's fine, too.
Well, I'm fine with voting it through.
Yeah, the original contract was significantly lower.
Exactly, I agree.
So there's some significant ground to make up.
Right.
And that, that's why.
That's why it looks like it does. But it's not, in my eyes, it's not, I mean, I think we're fair.
When you look at what we were paying for what we were getting in the past, without making exceptional comment, and what we have for what we're paying now, which is less, I think it's a good deal.
I, I agree. I just don't feel like you guys have the numbers, you've seen the numbers, like you maybe should have. That's my only concern.
I, Kevin knows, I know, Michaeline is comfortable with it, and Gary, I know, so, and I am, so. I mean, I say we vote it. Move to approve. Okay. Have a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
Second. Further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm sorry, I just, I feel like we should know the percentages. We have the right number. So I'm not, it's not to be against voting for credit.
No, no, that's, well, we do know them, but they're just not-
We know the overall picture.
You don't know the percentage increase. I'm sorry.
Okay, moving along. Policies for second reading. Policy 103 and 806.
I just said it. I mean, these are for first reading.
Oh, these are first or second?
These are second.
Oh, these are second reading. Okay, I'm sorry. I did have a question. I should have contacted you ahead of time about this. Just wondering, I think this 103 was put into place when Eric was here.
Yes.
And so I'm just, I, I read through that, and I'm wondering, do you keep a log? Or do you track complaints coming in? The policy, you know, gives a procedure for complaints coming into any of our sites. Then they are forwarded to you, dished back to the site administrator to respond to the complaint or to handle it. So do you, do you keep aware of that? I mean, do you keep a log of, you know, what are the complaints and what is the resolution at all? Or is it not?
The ones that I know of are the ones that have come via the online complaint form. I haven't been aware of any others that have come other than a, a comment. And it wasn't a, it wasn't a complaint or a question. It was just, it, it's nice that you're using this.
So the only ones you get are the ones that are coming in on the website?
Right.
Anybody making a complaint verbal or online should be forwarded to you?
And I have not-
I mean, I, I hope there are no complaints, but in most of our lives, it just may not be 100% true.
I can, actually, leadership tomorrow. I will bring that up, because those would be the people to whom the complaints would probably be watched.
I would just ask that you follow the procedure in the policy.
Okay.
Or set it up and adhere to it. That's all.
So we're going to approve them this evening?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Michaeline. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Gary. Further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business. Items for discussion and approval. Asbestos or abatement removal bid?
Okay, and I've got, you should have the form in your packet. There's your section 00410 bid form. And there's, there are alternates there for if the chalkboard and the corkboard in the current ANSYS room, that's going to be the DCD room. If those test positive for asbestos, we've got the alternates in this bid. So you've got a point of reference. This was the low bid by far. The next bid was a $214,000 bid, and then the high bid was $362,000. And unfortunately, that's the bid we opened first. And luckily, I didn't have a heart attack, so we were able to open the other two bids. I saw the $362,000 and almost lost it. But this one does keep us within that contingency UNESCO carved out for the abatement.
And these all are time-bound, so they all are adhering to the time parameters? So we're not taking the lower bid and then-
No.
That's my understanding. I just wanted to-
This is all done in six phases. And I, the, the entire bid process was very specific about the, the phases, what was included in the phases, the timeline for each of the phases, and the number of workers they were going to assign to each of those phases. So I've got all of that documentation. And with that, so we know now for the high school, exactly when the different sections are going to be abated. We know with the elementary school, exactly when certain sections are going to be abated, when the abatement zone is going to be taken down, where the new abatement zone will be put up and when. And there are contingencies in that bid. As far as if they don't adhere to their timeline, it becomes a cost to them. So they're going to do, they're going to do everything in their power to stay. It, it also makes it easier for them to stay within those timelines since they don't have to worry about cleaning up and getting done so kids can come into the building the next morning.
I always get nervous when, and have for some time, when, when bid openings and one bid is twice as much as another one type of thing. So, but having said that, have we done, on Envirobait, that's the low bidder here, do we have, have we done some investigation in terms of what they've done in the past and their job performance?
Yes.
Okay, good.
The rep from IEA, because I did ask, I said, $362,000. And he said, I wish they just would have told me that they had too many other contracts out this summer and just declined to bid. Because he said a lot of times what happens is that they are overbooked, and so they just throw a real high ball out there to see if they'll get the bid.
I never worry about the high one. I worry about the low one.
That's why I was-
So that's why, yeah. If you check that out, that's great. Thank you.
You said the two lower ones were pretty close?
The two lower, Mavo, Mavo and-
214 and 213.
Envirobait, they were within 10,000 or 11,000.
So that's, that's probably more realistic.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Elimination of Minnesota School for Liquid Asset Fund. Go on partying or something?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Bremer Bank approached us and wanted to meet with us to see what they could do about our fees that we were paying for bank services, and what they could do for interest earnings for us. So they came through with the proposal that was in the package, in the packet. And it's a couple percentage points higher than what we get at Minnesota School for Liquid Asset Fund. They found a way to switch our accounts around a little bit so that we could reduce our fees. And so we are recommending that we no longer use Midslab.
Have we always used Midslab, or did we use the local banks or any other bank before that?
Not before you came.
Not before me.
Well, not since you- Not since you've been here, but before that, in the INES era?
In, in, in the INES era, the money was split between the two banks and-
That's what I thought, and then we went to the state.
It was actually split again every Friday, because one bank computed interest at noon, and the neighboring bank computed interest at 3:00 on Friday. So at 1:00 every Friday, she would transfer the funds from one bank to the next, so she can double dip on interest.
But I know that the rates were better at the, this Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund for a long time, right?
That, that used to be the case.
And it sounds like your research is-
And they have several, the auditor said they have several clients that-
Are moving to local banks.
Another issue was the collateral, you know, Midslab has, has the ability to provide collateral on these large amounts. And where the local banks can always do that, Bremer doesn't have that.
And now they're so big that they don't have that.
Right. They, Bremer has the securities, and we already checked with our auditor. And that's absolutely fine to be using the securities. The other nice thing about Bremer is that they have a foundation, not a board. And so, any money that they make goes to benevolences. So, we can apply to Bremer for any of the earnings that they have gained in the banking industry.
Not for athletic signs.
Not for athletic signs, nothing.
I already asked that question.
Throw in a scoreboard.
So, anyway, motion to approve.
Okay, motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Gary. Further discussion?
I just wanted to ask, you guys went through all of the charges. I just want to make sure that there won't be any hidden charges that pop up that eat away at the difference between the two. They confirmed that.
Yeah, they had them all in my zone and.
And I'll make sure it's right for us.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, good question. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? High school ceiling replacement?
Okay, we've got the following quote. And this is just to put the ceiling tile and grid back into the rooms where it's going to be removed through abatement. And this is one of those contingencies that there is, there is funds for that because we have to have ceilings. And this is a company that we have gone through before with all the other. The hallways in the, that hallway in the office, those tiles have already been redone.
So moved. Got a motion, a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. Further discussion on the ceiling replacement? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the summer program?
This is, she said.
Summer Summit, right?
Summit, yeah. It's, this is summer school at Summit. They are an alternative learning program, which means that they can do after-school and summer school. And we can get state funding for that. But it does need board approval. What the board does need to discuss, besides hopefully giving the approval so we can do the summer school, this is phase six and phase seven of the abatement process. Phase six includes this room and the Mr. Gatzloff's room, Mr. Momsen's room, and Ms. Carey's room, or Querry's room. So, that's going to be the abated rooms. Summit does not need abatement. However, they will be sealed off from going into the hallway. The hallway is not being abated, the classrooms are being abated. But do we have the kids in, they will have access to water in that room, but they will not have access to the bathrooms. They will have to come out, just like the district office, will have to go out and around the building and come back in to get to bathrooms because we can't go in that hallway at all because that's all in the abatement zone. So, is the board comfortable with classes going on? It will all be sealed out, sealed up. Is the board comfortable with Summit, summer school classes going on in those classrooms? June 6th through the 17th, the abatement will be in process. On June 20th, the abatement zone will be removed. So, that Monday morning, all of the plywood and plastic comes down. This is a totally different abatement than what's going on at the elementary school. As far as the abatement, the only abatement we're talking about in this building is popping out the ceiling tiles, putting them in garbage bags, and then taking a damp cloth and cleaning off the grid so that the grid can be removed. So, it's, it's not like they're going to be sandblasting the asbestos the way they do need to in the elementary.
Good. And there will be people in the other parts of the building working?
Well, what?
There will be people in the district office?
Oh, yeah. We're, we're in the, we're in the district office. The advisors will still be way down at the end of the hall. And so, the MNVA offices, the K-12 employees will still be down at the end of that hall. Rose and Todd will still be here.
Kevin, to your question, can there be porta potties put out over here?
Well, I don't know how far people have to go.
I mean, or.
Why not just move the room to the other part of the, can they be on the other end of the high school for the summer?
There's a spot for that.
Is there an empty room that they could go into?
We need approval from the board before we can send the letters out. So, we're not, and it depends on the grades for second semester as far as who actually needs summer school. Todd was thinking that he might have like 10 kids. And so, and that's from eight in the morning until noon. And it's on, it's basically a credit recovery program. So, as soon as they get the credit or credits earned that they needed as far as what they hadn't finished before, then they're done. So, a lot of times, that first week of class, a lot of the kids do get done with those few things that they had biffed during the school year so they could actually get their credit.
So, how, you know, from where they are now, which bathroom do they have to go outside to use? Come around to do?
If they came out and then just came around the end and came right back in that, out by the locker rooms, by the tennis courts.
So, what about Mimi's suggestion of just moving to a different room?
It's only going to be 10 kids.
I wouldn't think she has a, is there a ton of books that go with them? Don't they all kind of have their own books they can create?
Because they're all doing different classes that they're doing credit recovery on.
And if you would feel more comfortable with them moving for June through the 17th?
Well, just be easier.
I think it would be easier than trying to deal with that.
And where do, where does the office staff have to go?
We have to go out and around and we'll come back in.
On the MNVA.
MNVA.
Right, that hall, this hallway will be openly used as restaurants.
And if it's raining?
Then we get wet.
Why wouldn't we just get a porta potty?
I'd rather get wet.
I would rather get wet.
The males are all going, eh, no problem. No! I wasn't going to, Kevin.
I know what the answer is going to be.
Sorry, I brought it up. We'll get wet then.
So, I would say, what, the recommendation would be to have.
They're clean.
The recommendation would be is have Summit move to another location for that week?
I mean, I guess whatever is, I mean, probably you need to talk to the principals. And I don't know what their summer, you know, there's a lot of work that gets done once school is out in the classroom. So, that is going to inconvenience them and needs to be considered as well. I'm just suggesting it sounds like it might be easier to move 10 to 15 students to another room.
For not that long.
For that long. My other question on this is, do they come in and sample the air and so forth?
Oh, you got, yeah, they do.
Same procedures?
Same procedures, exact, same procedures. It does, and I know it's not part of this, but this room is part of phase six. And we do have a, a board meeting, June 15th. And we can't be in here because this is part of the abatement zone.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned also for the district staff and the MNVA advisors that are in a room that if it's ventilated and it's part of the same thing, as long as the air is being checked?
Yep, yep.
The air sampling is being done?
It's a negative airflow once again. So.
As far as your quest, I don't know what your question was on the June 15th thing. In the evening, are they abating in the evening?
We, this is all going to be sealed off.
Oh, it's going to be sealed off, okay.
We'll have to find another location.
Oh, well, all right.
Preferably not a porta potty.
We're fine.
I was just going to suggest that.
I'm sure we can do that.
We can broadcast it.
Yeah, choir room, we can broadcast it, we can record it and put it out.
What we could do is once again, do the cube and have somebody come in with, and do the cube again and do it that way.
Which is fine, we'll make it work. Okay. So, again, approval of the Summit, summer school program. Do we have approval? I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Second by. Ready for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, who stuck into that?
Kevin.
Kevin, sorry. Q Comp, M O U?
Motion approved.
Oh, oh, sorry. All in favor? Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, which one are we on?
Q Comp, I guess. Q Comp, M O U.
The teachers are any approved. It's within its budget from the information chief. We're within the budget, right? It's self-funded.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
It's strongly recommended by you, I think.
Mm-hmm, oh, definitely.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? World's Best Workforce Plan?
This is, we're taking a little different focus than what we had before. The committee approved the district goals that are there. And then. So, that's the, a school template. We haven't had this in the past, but with the district goals being five-year goals, what the school will do, each of the schools, so Houston Elementary School will have for goal one, in five years, what are they really going to be looking at creating or having available within their school? And then, the school goal for 2016-17 is that SMART goal. So, that five-year goal might not have to be written as a SMART goal, but that 2016-17 goal will be a SMART goal that will say, "This is the measurable, specific chunk of that five-year goal we're going to do this first year so that we can make sure that by 2021, we have eaten the entire elephant." The, the key initiatives by component, those are the things that by legislatively, World's Best Workforce Plan need to be included in each of these components, each of these goals. So, they will be doing this for each of those, for each of the goals that are listed in that World's Best Workforce Plan that are indicated for their school. Houston Elementary School doesn't have to do all of them because they don't have a goal about graduation rate because they don't graduate kids. Summit and Houston High School don't have to have goals about grade three literacy, nor do they have to have kindergarten readiness goals because they don't have third graders, they don't have kindergartners. But then, that's, the plan helps them see what the district goals are. And then, the templates help them really plan for what they're doing, how they're going to do it, how they're going to measure it, how it's going to be evaluated. Because if you've got the goal without knowing the measurement and the evaluation, you don't really have much. You need this. And so, that way, as a board, at the end of that year, at the end of 2017, we can look at, okay, this is what you listed as your process for evaluating the student's progress toward this goal. What's the data? What is your system? With the system to evaluate the effectiveness of instruction and curriculum, we've already got that with TDE slash Q Comp. And we've got our six-year curriculum review cycle. So, we've already got those within the district. So, that will be the same thing in all of those plans. But then, the strategies for improving instruction and curriculum and the education effectiveness practices, that's where they're actually going to write their how. What are you going to use to really get this goal? What are you going to implement as far as the strategy to improve that instruction and curriculum? What educationally effective practices are you going to implement? Because if they just keep doing what they've been doing, they're going to get what they got. So, what changes are going to be there? How are you going to get this? And that's what four is. And then, the constituent surveys. We need to get better at finding out how we're doing, how other people think we're doing, what they think. Questions? Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Gary. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Announcements? Forty events? The committee? No, that's next.
Oh, then, one of the events was that, the online school meeting for board members. But it was discussed at the online meeting today. K-12 had invited up to two board members to Denver to meet and greet. But it was for one day. So, they would fly in and meet and greet and fly right out again. And it would be at the program, it would, the funds for that would come from our program budget. It's not something K-12 is putting on for us. So, that's an event that they politely declined.
And can we use those funds in our classrooms then? Or does K-12 get to decide whether those?
No, they have that, right. Those funds have already been basically allocated, allocated for classrooms and they would have to be, come out of the classroom to pay for the trip.
Yeah. We're not going.
Even though they have heavy converters.
Substantial.
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 It was amazing to meet the K-12 people.
You know, you just get this always on your mind.
All the other schools in the CEU, the new CEU.
The new CEU.
Why in Denver instead of London?
Spend one year's time in the airport there.
The person that is in charge of planning it actually lives in Colorado. So.
The only time you can actually have is that they had the event at the airport.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, you're a half hour, forty-five minutes.
If you ever phone in there and try to get out of there, you might as well just have it there given that short timeframe.
You get more out of it.
And if we can use it to educate kids, that's a much better use of the money.
Anyway, that was the only thing that was out there that I know about the documents. That is, it's brand new.
I know.
Okay, meeting and committee updates. Kryn said we had the online school meeting. Maybe you have comments you talked about?
We talked about the structure, we talked about that meeting. And then, we also talked about a future meeting. We're going to get some feedback on how, how many, how the online, or how the language classes are going online for kids since we switched over to that a few years ago and just have that discussion. And also, are the kids using the seats? And what does that whole picture look like? So, that's some of the stuff that's coming up.
And, and re-enrollment.
And re-enrollment, yeah.
That we're doing well in terms of re-enrollment.
And then, Kryn talked, talked a little bit about the three-year review process. What's going on with that?
How is that going? Is that making progress? That's a big job.
Yes, and so, some of you will get asked to be on a.
Okay, Gary, no, I didn't.
And there are basically four different divisions of standards for which we need to have documentation. And so, we will be asking board members, according to their expertise, to hopefully, hopefully serve on one of those subcommittees too.
When is the deadline for submission of the three, of this review?
We want to, right now, we've got an online committee meeting tentatively scheduled before the July board meeting so that we can. before the July board meeting, so that we can bring it to the online committee then, and I don't know if the three-year review documents have ever gone before the online committee before.
Well, when does M D E need the?
August 1st.
Okay.
That's, okay. And that's why July, if it's coming back to the online committee, they'd need to see it by July, so that.
I think it should go to the online committee, myself, if it hasn't before.
Nope.
I think it should.
I think it has.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we really talked much about it, though.
It was a while ago, three years ago.
It was three years ago. It was all online. I mean, it was on a.
I think it was discussed at all of that meeting.
I think it came to the full board, but I don't know that it went.
I don't know that it went prior to that, I don't ever seen us. So, that's when it's coming up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't know. I think that was, the only meeting that I know of. Mimi, do you have anything else you want to bring up on the online meeting?
Just a quick update, Mr. Chair, in High Wath Valley Ed District. We are discussing things with the Winona School District, with the hope that we can improve relations with them, the very up, that best they would, that they would come back into the fold, so that we could, once again, be whole, and there are benefits, and there's downside too, but, but, you know, benefits to us all acting together, but i, if nothing else, we want to cooperate with them and then collaborate with them as much as possible, provide services at the most cost-effective level.
You think that's a possibility?
Yeah, it is.
Have the conversations begun?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And we're also looking at a building in Lewiston, that would be possibly a spot where the whole of H-Fed would come together there, the two ALCs, one on a Dover, one on a Kellogg, would locate there. I don't think that would be, and I have made every effort to keep the ALCs from H-Fed competing with ours, it's a little, sometimes you got to wear two hats on this deal. So, but anyway, and then, we would move out of Winona and move the administrative offices into that location as well. So, we're looking at architectural designs and different things right now, and the Dover building is sold, and closing is within the next month. So, it's kept things busy, and we're going to even be busier, and I got a question, does UNESCO do architectural design as well as, you know, I know here, they've been doing, you know, they haven't had to have an architect necessarily design space and all that kind of stuff.
No, they have, MLA, they, they work with MLA Architecture, and so, Rich from MLA has been doing all of our renderings.
Okay, so I recommend that they be contacted to have a chance at it, so, could be, could be pretty interesting, so.
Another future agenda item, just so you've got it on your radar, at our next meeting, Tina Barnas is going to be coming to give information, she would, she's kind of put feelers out as far as the interest in having another overseas trip through MNVA, and, and once again, she would open it up for our onsite kids as well, and that's a summer trip, obviously not this summer, but she would, is going to be talking to you about what things she would like to get approved, and so, that will be at the May 3 meeting for approval at the May 17.
Anything else?
For future agenda items too, if we can start to, I would still like to do some sort of strategic planning, if we can keep it on there, something like that. The other thing is, I was wondering, along with some of the leadership or teachers, I was just talking with my kids about it, a student council might be a good idea too, I mean, these kids can rattle off some amazing ideas that they have, and things that they think might work, and areas they'd like, I mean, would they like a STEM wing, or, you know, all that sort of stuff, and so, maybe asking the kids. But then, I also thought, are we going to have another student on our board we did years ago?
Yeah, Mike Beckman.
We've tried, I think you've tried, right?
Do we ask every year?
Yeah, I've asked the, the, yes, I've asked Mr. Lambert, yeah.
Does he appoint them, or does it go out to the kids? I mean, I know it's a time.
You kind of have to have somebody who's interested.
I know, it's a time commitment, but I don't, I just want to, I mean, that's really trying, I mean, because I think, you know, we oftentimes forget that it's these kids that, you know, they have some great, and it was really interesting having him on the board, and he can provide, any kid can provide great input that we don't have, because we're not in the school.
Mm-hmm.
No, I agree, I mean, I thought it was nice to have, I mean, I know the ones of us that were on the board.
I think there's a still in the picky hand.
They were really.
Yeah?
I'm already on the board.
Oh.
Yeah. Anyway, I think it's, it's a good idea. It'd be nice if we, you can't, like Mike links, you can't force them to be on it, because it wouldn't work. And you want somebody that is, that wants to be on it, and is going to bring suggestions and ideas to the board.
Was there a student council?
Yes.
Yeah, we had.
Well, there is a student council.
Well, there's a student council, and, you know, and so, that's why I was thinking, maybe as part of the, maybe as part of the.
That's where Kevin came, he was on student council.
Strategic planning or something like that, or maybe we just have a fun session where we bring the kids in and just kind of pick their brains and get some feedback, and, do you want to schedule like a, a summer retreat? I would love to have something like that, and I don't want us to, and it kind of scare, it always reminds me when I see the World's Best Workforce, because I think we need to have bigger maybe goals than what's in that World's Best Workforce document, so I don't want us to think that because we've done that, we shouldn't be looking strategically at some of these other things, and maybe they line up, maybe they don't.
Well, I think one of the World's Best Workforce goals was the STEM initiative at their site, I mean, to get ideas from the kids at the sites would be a good way for the sites to maybe decide, you know, choose something generated from the kids.
Yeah, look at other things that we are.
So, I don't think a, personally, a summer, summer workshop or retreat with students, not going to do that to the students. Maybe when school starts up, September or October, before they get too entrenched in things, you know, when they're.
Or at the, or at the very end of the year, I know we're kind of almost at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Something to think about. I talked to Todd, you know, I think it's, you know, if we have a council, if we can get somebody to come in, one of the kids, that would be good. I'm losing that.
There's probably, there's at least 15 kids on student council, so.
Maybe one of them would be willing to be there.
They're also involved, they're in sports, they're in other.
And not necessarily.
They have jobs, kids are busy these days.
And not, maybe not necessarily like have them come to every meeting, but maybe have it, just like we do with the principals, you know, I like to see them more, but, you know, maybe have they, them come up with something.
Well, or once a month, you know, one meeting.
Yeah, or something, yeah. Something to discuss with them to.
I mean, at least we, we keep the meetings pretty on track, and it's, you know, they're not endless.
You can ask them, bring it up to them, have Todd bring it up, and I'm assuming he goes to their meetings at one time or another.
They have an advisor, I don't know who it is.
Chris Hyland.
Ask her, bring it up to, you know, you say, hey. Yeah, know where that is.
I don't know, it would even, it's not, I don't know if there are any MNVA students who could Skype in, and maybe there's somebody in MNVA who would, that this is sort of their, you know, political science or something like that, maybe they would let sit in, I mean, they can be a presence, can't they? They can't vote, they're not a voting member anyway, so it's not a posting thing, they can Skype in and be part of the conversation, so.
We've had some come in, Skype in before on other events.
When they've presented things.
Yeah, when they've presented some, so, yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay.
Any other ideas, thoughts?
We did get a thank you note from the family of Carol Plodna, for that. So, I have this here if anybody wants to read it, that's it.
Thank you. So, I'd lay a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Second, Mike, Kevin, passion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming. It's my pleasure.